Before I get started, I have a comment that I want to make. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. I want to congratulate Ben Cunnell on the chair-elect. And to let you folks know that I called Mr. Cunnell and I asked him to get the governor to appoint him as soon as possible, so he can be here maybe next week, because we need him here, we got a lot of business to do, and a lot of work, we need all bodies in these seats. So again, I send my congratulations to him, we look forward to maybe a speedy push to get here as quick as possible. And having said that, at this point in time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to, where's Councilman Russell Brazel, if you would, take the center seat, please.
Thank you, sir.
And the reason I'm doing this is, once I vacate the vice chair seat, I decide not to do it again, I'm going to support Mr. Brazel for vice chair. He's always wanted to run a meeting, have good practice, and this will be a good time for him to do it. Thank you, Mr. Brazel, pass it down to him. President, there's no objections of this county council?
No objections here.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Good luck, Mr. Brazel.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Jones. This is my first time running a meeting, so everybody just be patient with me, and we'll get through it. First, I'd like to call Pastor Watson from the House of Praise Ministry to do the invocation for us. Hey ma'am, thank you and welcome.
I'd like to say hello to everyone, and it is great to be called upon, thank you, to pray for this magnificent county that we live in. Let us pray. Lord God, I pray for all the citizens of Kershaw County, in order that we may live peaceful and quiet lives, and all godliness and holiness, and that all people will be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth. I pray for our county council leaders, and all those that are in authority. Give them supernatural wisdom, insight, and intelligence, to uncover and lead all the people of this county away from organizations that are sources of wickedness, criminal activity, and perpetration of evil in our cities and county. Help the concerned citizens, as well as the county council, to make the necessary laws leading to the persecution and sinning of every worker of evil. Father, I pray for all the poor and homeless in Kershaw County. May good news and freedom be proclaimed to them. Open the prison doors of poverty, and let light shine into their darkness and despair. Set the lonely in families, Father God, bless them. Bless all those who minister to the people of this county. Provide finances, resources, and workers. Give them compassion, wisdom, and grace, as they dispense help and resources to those in need. Father God, in these, I pray for the leaders of this county council, and for all the citizens of Kershaw County. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Watson, appreciate your words. Now, we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Now, I'd like to come to item four, make an adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion we adopt tonight's agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a first by Councilman Tomlinson, second by Councilman Cato. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, call for a vote to adopt the agenda as is. Unanimous, Councilman Jones, Tomlinson, Cato, Brazel, Schumate, Tucker.
Yes, sir.
Vote's unanimous. Item five, we come to public comments. Mr. Attorney, how many people signed up for public comments tonight, sir?
Four people have signed to speak.
All right. Would anyone like to read, Councilman Schumate, would you read?
Happy to. So our public comment guidelines are as follows. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to share information with council. It is not a time for debate with, or questions and answers from, council. It is a time for council to receive input from the speaker before council. In short, we will listen to public comments, but not comment on the public comments. Individuals requesting to speak must sign up, as they have done. Offensive and inappropriate comments will not be tolerated. Public comments is a time for council to listen. The period is limited to five minutes per speaker, and I believe, Mr. DeBois, you said it was four?
Correct.
Okay, so we're, our comment period is still within that, so it will be five minutes per speaker. And it shall continue uninterrupted, and be livestreamed by audio and video where available, until the public comment agenda item is finished and concluded. These rules may be altered or amended by council by a single vote.
Thank you, Councilman. Can we have our first speaker, please?
Our first speaker is Linda Cannatar, speaking on the Olympic connection.
Welcome ma'am, thank you. You have our full attention. You're welcome to start.
Excuse me. Mr. Tucker.
Yes, ma'am. I'm trying to write my notes, go ahead, I'm listening.
Vice Chairman Brazel, and council members. Did you all watch the Olympic Games the last two weeks? Did you watch the only Olympic sport where men and women compete together?
Relay.
As you might have guessed, it's equestrian. Horses and riders around the world compete in eventing, dressage, and show jumping, with each discipline awarding 12 medals. In Paris, of the 36 total medals awarded, 19 were won by men riders, and 14 won by women riders. Pretty good for the girls, right? All right. One of the women riders winning a silver medal a week ago has a significant connection to Camden. That would be Laura Kent Kraut, who at 58 years old, became the oldest U.S. athlete in any sport to win a medal in 72 years. How about that? Laura and her sister, Mary Elizabeth, grew up riding in the Atlanta area. Carol Kent, Laura's mom, started teaching her at three years old. In 1984, Lawrence and Carol Kent moved to the Camden area to run the horse show office for the new tri-color facility, which is now the South Carolina Equine Park. Both girls continued to show hunters and jumpers successfully at the national level, with Laura starting her professional riding and training career here. In 1992, she was selected to the United States Show Jumping Olympic Team as an alternate in Barcelona, Spain, then competed as an Olympic team member in years 2000, 2008, 2020, and 2024, winning a gold medal in Beijing, silver in Tokyo, and silver in Paris recently, with an eighth place finish in the individual competition. In addition to more than 100 Grand Prix wins, she was named the 2021 International Equestrian of the Year by the United States Equestrian Federation. When she is not competing in international events, Laura is now based in Florida and Great Britain. She is a mother to a son Bobby, and a grandmother, with one more expected next month. Laura's mom, Carol Kent, still lives here in Camden, and is a very lovely lady and a good friend. Erin Vale, another past horseman who lives in Ocala, Florida, is also competing successfully for the United States Olympic Team in international events. At the prestigious Blowing Rock Horse Show just two weeks ago, Camden's Liza Boyd, Ned Tao's sister, won numerous championships, and was first and second in the $25,000 International Hunter Derby. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize these three great equestrians. We can all be very proud of their accomplishments made at the highest levels of national and international events, and the role that our Kershaw County and Camden community has played in that success.
Thank you ma'am, appreciate you bringing up all those fine accolades that started right here in Kershaw County. Appreciate you bringing that to light. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Melody Harden, Pecan Orchard is the subject.
Ms. Harden, welcome.
My good.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Make sure that the mic's close to your mouth, so we can hear you.
My name is Melody Harden, and my family and I live at 412 Blackberry Place in the Pecan Orchard. We have lived in Lugoff since July of 2019. We do not know much about the prior issues our neighborhood has had with water, but I can definitely tell you about all the issues we've had over the last five years. We have experienced the water issues, we experienced the water issues a few months after we moved in. After heavy rains, it became obvious that our septic tank was full. In a normal scenario, this would be okay. In our case, we have the septic tank pumped out in July of 2019, and we're having to have it pumped out again just a few months later. When the septic company came out, the problem was obvious, storm water and rainwater. As as fast as the septic truck could pump it out, the water was pouring back into our septic tank. The septic tank began to pump as much as they could for that day. Unfortunately for us, they had to come back the next day to pump it out again. From July of 2019 to November of 2019, we had to have our septic tank pumped three times. This theme has continued. After talking to the county many times, and nothing being done to address the storm water and drainage issues in our neighborhood, we then decided to add another drain field to our septic tank. Even after adding the drain field, we have continued to have issues. Since we put the additional drain field in, we have had our septic tank pumped four additional times, and getting ready, after all the rain we've recently had, to have it pumped again. That's a total of seven times in five years. We also have a French drain on that side of our yard to help with the draining. So that is a two, two drain fields and a French drain on a third of our yard to help with the storm water drainage. Since 2019, we have dealt with the storm water and sewage from our yard and the neighbor's yard. As of today, we still have running water out of our French drain and sewage in our front yard flowing to the ditch. Regarding the sewage overflow, we aren't the only people in the Pecan Orchard having sewage overflow in their yards and running down the ditches. The septic and sewage is just one of the issues from storm water. Due to the storm water and lack of a drainage system, we have had our yard flooded, ground washed out from under our fences and buildings, and numerous other water-related issues. We have talked to the county many times about these issues. The county has come out and worked several times, but have only put Band-Aids on these issues. They have put in a ditch, but they do not maintain it. It has caused our road to get smaller, and our mailboxes and several other mailboxes were installed in the middle of the ditch. Our driveways have washed out twice to this point, and we were unable to drive in and out of our driveway. This has happened since the ditch was installed. The pipes installed under our driveway are too small and get clogged every time it rains. We have had to clean out our ditches numerous times. We have purchased truckloads of dirt and sand to fix the erosion from our storm water drainage. Before and/or after most rains, we continue to have to clean the ditch, fix mailboxes, add dirt and sand, clean up all the sand and debris that has run in our yard from Holly Berry. Again, this is just some examples of the issues we deal with from storm water. There are several questions we have not been able to get answers to, and I know y'all can't answer, but these are just some of the questions. Why haven't the ditches been maintained? Why haven't ditches been put up and down all the Pecan Orchard roads? Why aren't the trees trimmed off the roads and maintained? The few trees that have been cut, why aren't the limbs and debris cleaned out? The debris is just left to clog all the ditches. Why hasn't the sewage drainage running from the ditch and into other yards been addressed? This is a serious health risk. Why hasn't the county come out when it's actually raining to see the actual issues? You can clearly see exactly what is happening. The water drains from the other roads in the Pecan Orchard to Blackberry due to the lack of storm.
Ma'am, I hate to interrupt you, but your time is up.
Well, can I finish?
We usually stop things right at five minutes, how much do you have left?
Just a little bit.
I'll allow 20 seconds.
Okay. Due to the lack of the storm drainage system and/or drain system that isn't maintained, I understand county members don't answer questions during the meeting, but these questions need to be answered. You are welcome to meet me at 412 Blackberry Place to answer them. I can also provide the county with pictures and videos of the drainage issues. You can clearly see that the lack of storm drainage system and lack of ditches on the other Pecan Orchard roads are a major contributor to the storm water issues on Blackberry. Lastly, do not think that the lack of people that are able to attend these meetings is a sign that the neighbors in the Pecan Orchard do not agree, or that some aren't having issues. We have many neighbors that are unable to attend due to children's activities, work obligations, and other valid reason. If the last, if the lack of attendance is a concern for the county, feel free to come by and speak to our neighbors. They will be happy to express their concerns.
Ma'am, I must politely ask you to end it.
It's the last sentence. They will be happy to express their concerns and issues. If you decide to meet with neighbors, do not come with the same disrespectful attitudes some of your county directors and officials have shown. These are serious and valid issues that need to be addressed.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, for the record, Councilman Jones and myself have been to the subdivision, we've talked to Administrator Templar, and Danny, if you could have her name and number, and we will have a community meeting with you. Thank you. Next on the list, please.
Next speaker is Corlin Buring, again, Peach Orchard.
Also, Mr. Brazel, if I may, there are pictures, everybody has pictures in front of you?
Yes, yes.
May I get to start?
Yes, you start whenever you're comfortable, thank you ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Corlin Buring. I know many of you are tired of hearing from me and about me. I feel quite the opposite about most of you, as I would like to hear from you more often. It's interesting that I have received a response and a plan of action from the South Carolina Office of Inspector General within two days of coming. Office of Inspector General within two days of contacting them, but I have yet to receive a response from two emails that I sent to the county administrative office in 2021. Moving on to why I'm here tonight. We have lived at 417 Blackberry Place since the summer of 2018. The drainage issue was a problem for us then, and by the end of 2020, the issue had drastically increased. In 2020, we began to notice the water was pouring over the roads into our ditch where the side that is closest to our home was partially collapsed, down our driveway and then down to our shop. I find the argument of it not being the county's water laughable. I guess the gravel from the county-maintained road somehow got there on its own. The fix for this didn't help and it actually exasperated the problem. We now have the pleasure of not only our shop flooding, but also water pools under our home. I have asked for, I have asked for a professional to come in and evaluate, but instead, we receive a county attorney and administrative employee who are apparently qualified to determine water flow. I was told at this time that the pipes were installed on Crab Apple Way, were put in the lowest-lying area in the neighborhood, and that the county would not be spending any more money to address the water issues in Pecan Orchard, which is in fact not true. It is not by any means the lowest-lying area. At some point during all of this, the county sent out crews who dug a second ditch, a trench is more accurate word, on the other side of Blackberry Place. The remnants of the original ditch still flows through my neighbor's yards. I was advised by county, excuse me, employees to obtain an attorney if I felt like that was necessary. I have now had enough and deem it necessary. I have also been in contact with every one of my representative offices at the state and federal levels. They are all very concerned with what's going on in Kershaw County and many are doing their own investigating. As recently as last week, a Kershaw County admin employee was in blaming DHEC. I was also told that property owners are responsible for damages. Here is the question that no one can, can or wants to answer. How is the water that floods off county roads into county ditches and into our yards our problem? We are left with stagnant water sitting for days. I am also waiting on a response from DHEC, as I would like for them to come out and test the water. It stands for days and sometimes weeks in the county's ditches, as many of us are concerned about health risks. We are now at a crossroads and the direction we go is up to the members of this council. It is time to step up and do the job that you were elected to do, what you took an oath to do. It seems the county council is more than happy to spend taxpayer funds on ball fields and green spaces, which are good things, but when it comes time to help their constituents, it all falls on deaf ears. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate the concerns. Administrator Danny Templar, within the next three weeks, I'd like to call a community meeting in which any council member would be welcome to, to attend with the HOA. Can you facilitate that, please? I would, I would say get a group and a point of contact could be you, if you would leave your contact with our administrator. And I will, I will be there personally and anyone else who would like to be there would be welcome to be there and we will come up with some sort of a plan of action. Thank you. We have one more speaker.
Correct. Mr. Tom Webb, subject election, maybe Trump and then litter, I think.
Good. Mr. Webb, welcome. It's after, after four years of friendship, it's finally nice for, for me to be able to welcome you to the podium to speak.
Glad to see you up there with the gavel. Got several things I want to talk about. I wanted to say something about the, the race for county council chair. Somebody else wanted me to speak about it, too. I wanted to speak about it. I went to all three of the meet and greet events and if anybody will feed me, I will certainly go and listen. And they were all good and the food was good. But at one of them, Governor McMaster spoke and he told some jokes and he said something about the Constitution and how young people seem to be lost. And I thought it was very good, but the problem with it is that he chose to get into a local election and favor one Republican over another Republican. If he were speaking for a Republican and it was anybody else out there that he needed to be against, I could understand that. But I think he should have either stayed out of it or encouraged both of the Republican candidates. Anyway, that's, that's old news. So I want to move on to something else. It's been a month now since the assassination attempt of, of Trump. And there's not any information coming out that I'm hearing, hardly anything, but I've put together an idea and I'll run it by you. I think there was another shooter. And the reason is Trump said he heard a bullet whiz by. Well, a bullet fired from an AR-15, it's a very high-velocity bullet and it doesn't whiz by, it makes a pop when it goes by. If you've ever been to basic training and crawled around in the mud, there's a machine gun shooting over you and you can hear the bullets, they pop, 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 and then you hear the muzzle blast, boom, 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 because the bullet's going faster than sound. And it sounded like a firecracker right overhead. He didn't report that. He reported he heard, he heard the bullet whiz. So my guess is that it was a subsonic round. And if it was subsonic, it was fired from a rifle that had a silencer on it. It wasn't young Crooks that, that fired that shot. He fired eight rounds, it seems like, from an AR-15. But Trump, when the, when the bullet went by his ear, he suddenly moved and that, that spoiled any other shot. So where did his shot come from? Well, there was a water tower in the, in the vicinity and there was somebody who said they saw somebody up there and they, they have a video that has somebody up on the water tower. And a lady reported that somebody rappelled off the water tower all the way to the ground and ran across a parking lot and got into a vehicle with license tags that were government, government license tag. And he drove away. What was that about? Is it true? I don't know. There's so much, so much disinformation. Disinformation's put out sometimes to cloud the issue. But anyway, Trump heard something whiz by rather than pop. It would have deafened him in that ear. His ear would have been ringing if it had been a high-powered rifle shot. So it was subsonic that went by his ear, however that happened. So young Mr. Crooks was a patsy. They intended for him to be killed and to be the one that gets the blame for the, the whole mess. Professional killer had a hard time with a scope somewhere way out there on a water tower. Because Trump was moving, as he talked, he moved. So he only had to miss by just a little bit, which he did. So I wish somebody would have checked out the stands looking for bullet holes. They might have found more than eight, might have found nine. And I wanted to have, I wanted to turn in my cardboard, because cardboard is outlawed in your litter ordinance, but I'm out of time, so I'll have to do that another time. But thank you for listening.
Mr. Webb, it's always nice to see you. Our thoughts and prayers are with the families of, of President Donald Trump as well as the family, more importantly, that lost a life. So thank you for speaking on that topic. We're up to item six, public hearings. I'm going to open this, but first I'm going to explain it. We have an ordinance to impose a moratorium to temporarily prohibit the acceptance and processing of applications for zoning map amendments and new development submissions within the geographic boundaries of the Airport Overlay District, Section 3-7-1 of the Kershaw County Unified Code of Zoning and Land Use Development Regulations, our ZLDR, to end the application of the moratorium on January 9, 2025, and to the, provide for other matters relating thereto. I'll, I'll now open the public hearing.
We have one speaker that signed up ahead of time, Craig Thompson.
All right, and he'll have 10 minutes to speak, is that correct?
Correct.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening. I hope to not take 10 minutes tonight. My name is Craig Thompson. I am the pastor of Malvern Hill Baptist Church in East Camden and the husband to a great wife and the father of four excellent kids in Kershaw County schools, one of whom is starting as quarterback for the Bulldogs in just a few minutes, so I have to hurry. I come before you tonight to comment on the building moratorium being proposed in the airport district in East Camden. Per my conversations with several council members in recent weeks, it's come to my attention that our property at Malvern Hill Baptist Church falls within the geographic boundaries of the overlay and as a result, Malvern Hill would be prohibited from building under the current guidelines of that moratorium. Malvern Hill is one of, if not the largest church in our county. We've grown at an incredible pace in recent years and have seen wonderful things happen, lives changed and families transformed. As a result, we are in the planning stages for the next phase of our building process and will begin a capital campaign in two weeks to fund those buildings. I stand before you to ask you to reconsider the moratorium or to make significant changes to the moratorium so that Malvern Hill is not faced with legal challenges to house our growing congregation when we attempt to break ground in the near future. Second, I stand before you on behalf of East Camden and ask that council consider East Camden as an opportunity to do something good, beautiful, true, and right for our county. Unlike other corners of our county, East Camden has remained largely untouched for the last 40 to 50 years. As a result, we all understand that East Camden is ripe for growth and change. Council has listened to the concerns of constituents and has placed a moratorium on building, but I would ask that council members actually visit East Camden and dream with me and others about the future of our community. I fear that decisions are being made for East Camden by council members who have not visited East Camden or who may not have made efforts to get to know all the constituents of East Camden. In many ways, East Camden is a blank canvas upon which our county council could create a beautiful, vibrant community that becomes a showpiece for the county. The residents and businesses of East Camden know what it's like to be overlooked by the county at large, but our past does not have to be our future. Rather than merely passing moratoriums and fighting inevitable growth, I urge, I urge council to consider how they might step in and make the coming growth to East Camden a win for all parties involved. East Camden, the airport district, could become a vibrant community anchored by the airport, the military academy, churches, and if rumors are true, potentially a school. Sidewalks and parks and walkable grocery stores and restaurants could actually be a reality in East Camden. And as a result, the residents of East Camden in places like Valley Park could have a greater quality of life and could see their property values increase. None of this is easy, but all of it is possible with a little work and imagination. I stand before you willing to be a part of the solution, but I cannot do that alone. We desperately need county council to lead in this area. The time for political grandstanding has passed and the day for vision and leadership is here. Please join me in dreaming and planning for a better East Camden that benefits all of our citizens, past, present, and future. And please do not impose a moratorium that would keep a church from being able to move forward to accommodate its growing congregation. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you are allowed to ask me those, otherwise I am finished.
Thank you, Pastor. I, I do have a question. What is your timeline on, you're going to build a new sanctuary, is that right?
Well, we have the need to build a new everything, our, which is a wonderful problem. So basically, we will begin with an education facility and then expand at some point when we are able to afford so into a new sanctuary. The timeline for that would be hopefully to be able to break ground sometime first quarter of 2025. Now, I understand that the moratorium is set to expire in January of 2025. I also understand that the moratorium could be extended by simple vote of council without readings. And so I am speaking at this point because I don't want to see us get into a situation where you guys trying to do what I believe is good for Kershaw County have unintentionally created a scenario where another entity that is very good for Kershaw County is serving 600 or 700 of your residents is being handcuffed as a result of, of this decision.
Pastor, we, we take this very serious. We want to see your church grow. We want to see as many people in church as possible. I think it's one for what you do, the service to the community and service to Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, and we will find a solution for you, sir.
I have, I have-
And I do as well.
Let me go first.
Go ahead.
Pastor, how are you doing?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
You and I had some spirited conversation at the Sunshine Lollipop Business Office Club. Anyway, we sat there for about 30 minutes and was looking at each other and I tell you, it got spirited, but I enjoyed the conversation, I really did. And you got my attention on when it comes to houses of faith, churches, and I heard you say that and I'm not agreeing with it just because you're so darn big. I'm telling you that because I mean, it made sense to me, it's something I didn't think about. And when you talk about East Camden, I lived in East Camden a lot of my youth. I was between Lugoff, you know that Chip, between Lugoff and East Camden, just a Lugoff, East Camden boy. And as I said, it, it is, gosh, it's, it's ripe for opportunity, no question about it. And decisions we make are certainly going to, we're going to have to live with the consequences, good or bad, whatever. But anyway, you got my attention on that. I appreciate it and appreciate you being here tonight. And you woke me up.
Good.
And if you, if you preached like that in church, I wouldn't be able to sleep, I can assure you that.
They don't sleep in our church.
No, I guarantee you that. But no, seriously, you, there's some amendments coming tonight because of the conversations we've had with you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And Pastor Craig, I know that you got to go. Your son's starting for-
We're good. I got time. You guys are very efficient, so we're all right.
But we, we've had conversations throughout this and I appreciate you reaching out and, and you're right, this is not, this is not something as a stamp on we're stopping building at all. That was not the purpose and I stated that when we, we first talked. This is a point of where, you know, us as policymakers, we're sitting up here having to make a decision onto whether the Airport Overlay District is going to affect Kershaw County for multi-millions of dollars in the future. And I hope that the engineers come back and this is going to be short-term and we can go forward with this. And this, it's not to stop that. And I appreciate all you do. And also, you came up with a great idea about starting an East Camden Coalition. So people coming together and everybody in the community there, it's a great spot. It really is. We have, we have assets that need to be capitalized on and I, I appreciate you doing that and we're going to start that East Camden Coalition going forward.
I'd be happy to sponsor that meeting. I'd be happy to host it at Malvern Hill. I would also encourage you guys, before you make decisions for East Camden, that you get to know all the people in East Camden. Valley Park is not what Valley Park once was. It's been populated by 35-year-olds with, with two and three and four children in their homes. And we make decisions for Valley Park that just satisfies those folks that are in my friend Jimmy's age bracket.
Thank you.
We're not, you're welcome. We are, we are not necessarily, and I, you guys are policymakers, I am just a speaker. We are not necessarily speaking on behalf of all the citizens of East Camden. Malvern Hill doesn't represent all the citizens of East Camden either. But I, I do know that many of the folks that are moving into Valley Park, and I know them because they attend our church, I know them because I drive past their house and pray for them, I know them because I knock on their doors, I know that many of those folks don't have near as much gray hair as I have. And they would welcome an opportunity to have a community where they could raise their children with green space and sidewalks, walkable, I mean, they don't, there's no access. And we talk about food deserts, there's no access to food in East Camden. There's not a grocery store, there's not a restaurant, there's nothing.
You got CC Snack Shop, though. That's a good place.
We do have CC Snack Shop. I apologize for that, sir.
Country Kitchen, Country Kitchen.
I stand corrected. Thank you all for allowing me. Without any further questions, I will cede my time.
And my picture's in the Country Kitchen Restaurant.
Well, I apologize. See, I'm, I'm mistaken.
Thank you.
And I do eat regularly at the IGA Deli counters.
You know, you know we like you and appreciate you.
Thank y'all so much. Y'all have a nice night.
Thank you, sir. All right, if that's it for public hearing, any more speakers?
Nope.
All right, I'm going to close this public hearing. With item six, public hearing closed, we have a public presentation by Mr. Chip Galloway. This was a lot of fun today, having, having Mr. Galloway here and we had Congressman Ralph Norman here. This is a real blessing. So he's going to speak on, on a, on a disease, the myo, I'm going to mispronounce it, golly, myositis.
You got it.
Help me.
You got it.
Chip, take it away, sir.
Councilman, I've known many of you a long time and I am blessed to be here today. And just for those who are here, I'm the most blessed person in this room that you will ever know. In January of 2020, I was diagnosed with a disease called inclusion body myositis. And before I was going through this search to figure out what was going on with me, I'd never heard of it. Inclusion body myositis is a degenerative muscle disease that they don't know if it's the aging of the muscles or if it's autoimmune, but it takes away the ability and the strength and mainly the arms and legs. Normally doesn't touch the heart, thank you, Christ. And it can cause swallowing issues, but it's taken away my ability to walk, it's taken away my ability to use my hands and I can't make a fist anymore. But in January of 20, I was diagnosed with this at the Medical University of South Carolina. I got an opportunity to go to Johns Hopkins Myositis Clinic in 2020 and to understand and- and to understand and further learn about this. For about three years, I just kind of played at it. I was still getting along well, could still go up and down the stairs. It's a slow debilitating disease and it mimics ALS. So I started my journey in 2020 and didn't do much till the beginning of 2023. I was at church one Sunday and went down to the altar, bowed my head and asked the Lord to use me. And it got quiet. Next Sunday, I went down to the altar and I said, Lord, thank you for giving me this disease. You've done it for a purpose, you do everything for a purpose, and Lord, use me. And He spoke up. And when He spoke up, it was great. I've been to do so many great things. I get to go to church with Russell's grandmother and I love Ms. Lou, she's ninety-six, she's going to be ninety-seven this year. And she is my encourager and she uplifts me a lot. But I asked God to use me and that year I decided to do a 5K. I went to the Citadel Military College in Charleston and thought I was fit and then I tried to do a 5K with this disease and I did it in just under an hour. Not quite last, but I finished.
Amen.
And since then, God has used me so much. I printed bracelets and on the bracelet it says IBM Warrior. And God is a powerful warrior and He's using me for His good. And I'm doing, I'm traveling around and telling people about myositis awareness. I believe there's somebody in this world that has the knowledge to cure what I have. I hope it happens in my lifetime and it's not going to benefit me, but they may not know about it. And I want to get the word out that maybe they can learn about it, make it their lives work and that they can cure. So my four-year-old grandson will never have to go through what I'm going through. Since I asked the Lord to use me, I did the clinic classic 5K in April of twenty-three. The Myositis Association based out of Columbia, Maryland, picked up the picture of me crossing the finish line. I was on a national magazine with my victory pose. I threw out the first pitch at the Citadel VMI baseball game for Myositis Awareness Month. I threw out the first pitch at Ben Lippin High School Baseball Team for Myositis Awareness Month. I threw out the first pitch at University of South Carolina, Georgia Baseball Game for Myositis Awareness Month and got to address the team. And the point of addressing the team is to let them know that we may think we have plans of how we want our life to go and how we want to do things, but God's plans are greater than ours. I told them Jeremiah twenty-nine eleven, and I don't want to misquote the Lord, so y'all stay with me. Jeremiah twenty-nine eleven says, "For I know the thoughts that I think towards you," says the Lord, "thoughts of peace, not of evil, to give you future and a hope." That's what He's doing for me and the opportunities that He's given me in my life are tremendous. Never did I think a little kid from growing up in East Camden, South Carolina, would be standing on the U.S. House floor, accepting a proclamation on May first, 2024, with Ralph Norman saying, "May is Myositis Awareness Month in the U.S." I mean, what a blessing. I would not have that opportunity if the Lord hadn't blessed me with the affliction He's given me. And I use it for His glory every day. And the only way I got to do that is through a friend of mine who's here today, sitting in front of us, Russell Brazel. I said, Russell, I said, "I want a proclamation for the U.S. House. Can you help me out?" And he goes, "I got you, buddy." And he put me in touch with Ralph Norman. Also, I did a Crossing of the Cooper for Christ fundraiser for the Myositis Association. It was October of last year and two weeks before the walk, I fell and broke my leg and broke my foot. And I'm in a wheelchair because I'm not strong enough for crutches. The volunteers in that event pushed me across the Ravenel Bridge in Charleston, the two and a half miles, and we raised fourteen thousand dollars for the Myositis Association.
Amen.
We are going to make a difference in this battle. There are many rare diseases out there and people need help. I've been asked to serve on the Board of Directors with the Myositis Association out of Columbia, Maryland, and I served with them starting January first of this year. I'm here today to help bring awareness. I'm hoping somebody out there sees me, don't have to know my name or who I am. There's this old gray-haired guy that had inclusion body myositis. And I want to see what it takes to help him and they might be able to cure it. It's a blessing because if I didn't have this disease, I would not be able to stand in front of you here today and speak. There are people that I would never be able to meet, there are places that I would never be able to go. Last year in September, I flew to San Diego to the International Patients Conference of the Myositis Association and got to share a breakout session called Finding Strength Through Faith. And I got to travel across the country and tell people about Christ and how you can be used by the Lord regardless of whatever affliction you may have. We all go through trials and there are trials and they're tough. What we do with those trials and the faith that we have through those trials will inspire others. And I want to inspire others that are going through whatever they're going through. Whether it's watering the yard or watering the ditches or whether it's a stop in growth that is, God can use that and look at the positive on the way He can do it, look at the positive. I got to see the pastor from East Camden, I grew up in Valley Park, that's close to my heart. But when we go through these trials, you share and you can uplift other folks. Your ninety-six-year-old grandmother lifts me up every Sunday and asks me how I'm doing and what she can do for me. She is an inspiration to me. And I stand before you here today, I just wanted to share that with you. The bracelets that I give out, say myositis, I mean, say IBM Warrior on it, say myositis awareness. And they also say Psalms one thirty-nine fourteen. Psalms one thirty-nine fourteen says, "For I will praise thee, for I am fearfully and wonderfully made. Marvelous are your works and my soul as well." God made us perfect. He made me perfect with this disease and He has blessed me with this disease. I've grown closer to people that I never thought I would because He's allowed me to have this. What a great thing to happen if I got cured. What a miracle that would be and what glory to the Lord I could give. But what greater glory to the Lord I can give if He doesn't cure me and I continue to proclaim the gospel. I just want to let y'all know how blessed I was. I got a proclamation from y'all last year. Last year for Myositis Awareness Month and y'all brought Ralph Norman here for me today. And I wanted to thank y'all for that and thank you for the opportunity. God's got plans for me, so y'all watch. It may not be upright and walking, I may not be fast, but God's got a plan for each and every one of us. And I just want to thank y'all for the opportunity to come here and speak.
Thank you, Chip.
Thank you so much. If I may, Russell, if I could.
Of course.
Thank you. Chip Galloway. You're my buddy. You've been an inspiration to me, Chip. All right, I want you to listen to me, I'll hug Sammy. Chip, I've enjoyed our late-night talks at times, I've enjoyed our morning talks at times. You've been a big inspiration to me. I really have watched you on your journey. And I want to thank you for doing what you're doing because you're helping people and you don't even know it. God bless you, brother, we love you.
I am blessed, I still get to work forty hours a week if they have a ramp in my office. So when I get to the point, I may even make it upstairs, I've got a ramp, so I can keep going and keep working.
You keep going, Chip Galloway, thank you.
Anyone else like to make any comments?
I love you too, brother.
Mr. Galloway, it is, it's been a pleasure getting to know you. And you are definitely an inspiration and you're, I want to tell you, you're right. You know, even, we all have trials, we all have issues and God can use us in a lot of different ways. He's using you in a mighty way, but I appreciate your openness and I appreciate you fighting for the people that have this disease and we're praying for you each and every day.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Galloway. It's been same, same as Danny, it's been a pleasure meeting you. You met my daughter today, she's interested in being a physician and she was asking about, she read the proclamation, didn't know the condition, so she's been researching it now, so, you know.
She might be the one.
Well, you know, it's the point, right? Like the awareness that you raised, like there's a sixteen-year-old girl who would have never known what this thing was and now she does. So, thank you.
Mr. Galloway, I love you too, buddy. Some people are jealous of that, like Jimmy, but it's okay. You know, I love you and your family and you're a part of our family. And I, I just want to remind everyone before you started this journey that you had already done abundance of work in Kershaw County as a young man, as a teenager, as an adult, as a businessman, every title you could have. You've never been selfish with your time, you know your family. And I can't, we can't thank you enough for all you have done and what you will continue to do. And if anything I have to say is continue to let Him use you because you're shining as bright as a star.
I tell you what, I've learned in this journey, I thought I knew what I wanted to do and His plan is so much greater than mine.
Amen.
Where I've been able to go with the, I mean, I would never dreamed He would let me do some of the things I get to do. I am so blessed.
Stay strong. I'd like to say one thing and then we'll close this out. Today was a lot of fun to surprise you and Ralph Norman was a gentleman to, he reached out to me. He wanted to bring you the framed documents from Washington, D.C. It was a real honor just to be a part of that with you and him both. And anyone that can take an affliction, you could have fallen into a depression, you could have felt sorry for yourself, but you've turned around and you let God lead you in a direction. The word perspective comes to mind. You've given me perspective about what I whine and fuss about in my own two ears, you know? In this gray matter called my brain, you know, I complain about a lot of things and I grumble to myself a lot. And you have given me a great gift of perspective today and I want to thank you for that. And you and your beautiful wife have a good night and y'all get out of here.
I'm going to go sit down and go get some rest, I'm sorry.
No, go, go, go get some rest, my friend.
Smart man.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chip.
Thank you, Mr. Galloway.
Thank you. Well, if that doesn't make you appreciate the blessings in life, I don't know what will. We're going to move on to the approval of minutes. Number eight, Kershaw County Council, Tuesday, July twenty-third meeting, our regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve minutes?
Make a motion, we approved minutes.
Second. Have a second. First from Councilman Cato and a second from Councilman Tucker, any discussion? No discussion. How do we vote? We vote aye? Any opposed? None opposed. All right, read that into the minutes. These minutes are approved from the last, last meeting.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes, sir.
I just want to tell, I think it was Ms. Hannah was here last time, or was it Ms., yeah, Ms. Hannah, you were here. Thank you for the minutes, appreciate it.
Moving on, item nine, we have ordinances. A third reading and ordinance to impose a moratorium to temporary prohibit the acceptance and processing of applications for zoning map amendments and new development submissions within geographic boundaries of the Airport Overlay District, Section three dash seven dash one of the Kershaw County Unified Code of Zoning and Land Use Development Regulations, our ZLDR.
Mr. Brazel, I'd like to make a motion, we approve third reading of this ordinance.
Okay. I didn't quite finish it, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. You're kind of slow talking today.
I'm just not quite as fast as Mr. Jones. To end the application of the moratorium on January ninth, twenty twenty-five and to provide for other matters related there too. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Brazel, I would like to make a motion that we approve third reading of the ordinance described.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Brazel.
Mr. Jones.
If I may, I'd like to make an amendment. I'd like to, well, my amendment would be that we, as residential houses, only be, exclude any houses of faith, any places of faith.
So to restate the amendment, the amendment would be that we exclude churches and houses of faith?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
I will second that with a legal opinion.
All right, ask a question.
Are you giving one or asking for one?
No, I'm asking for our attorney, Mr., the only attorney sitting on council here.
Now, you just went and complicated it now.
Yeah, no, I second, I second, but I would like the opportunity for a legal opinion is that.
Here we are for a legal opinion on the amendment proposed by Councilman Jones. Attorney DeBose?
It's a probably somewhat nuanced opinion. If y'all want it in executive session, it'd certainly be appropriate. I could speak to it here, but again, it's would be the opinion of potential attorney-client privilege.
Okay, should, would y'all be willing to go into an executive session? For, and just for my purpose of, we've put a lot of time and effort into this. And as I stated before during the public hearing, this is not a, the purpose of this is to not stop growth. It's not to stop building. We have an asset that is a historical asset in our airport in Kershaw County. We have an overlay that is built into our comprehensive plan, an overlay district. And we have the responsibility of policymakers sitting up here to take care of our assets and to take care of Kershaw County taxpayer dollars. Because we could be in a situation in twenty-five years where if these houses were built or a church was built, whatever, on that property and it happens to affect, we could be in a point where the decisions that we stand here today and make could change the airport, the airport could be gone. This airport was built in, excuse me, World War Two? The late thirties is, goes back. So we could be in a process where we're going to have to sell our airport, move somewhere else or buy these houses back, which is millions upon tens of millions of taxpayer dollars. And I don't know about y'all, but when I ran this getup here, I promised to be a steward of taxpayers' money. So that, that's the whole point of this. So I think, I think, I would like to get an executive session if that's okay.
Councilman Brazel?
I don't mind the executive session as long as we keep it short. I tell you, we got people out here waiting and, you know.
All right, so can we amend the agenda to move the third reading of this ordinance to to just before, make it like fourteen C? And then we can bring it back up and vote on it before we adjourn?
You can do that as the chair.
Any objection?
So, so just to be clear, you would have.
I don't want to go into executive session twice.
Yeah, we could just do it once. We could do one big executive session and then come out for that one vote.
Right.
So.
Okay.
End of our executive session.
I don't want these people out here from the Pecan Orchard to sit here all night with us going, just go ahead and take care of our, because the administrator's going to give us a briefing on an assessment.
Can we amend the agenda at this point?
Yeah, well, y'all have adopted the agenda, but I believe your rules provide the chair can reorder the agenda.
Correct.
All right, I'm going to make a motion that we move nine A.
No, you don't make a motion. You can just do it.
Okay, well, all right, well then.
If no one calls for a point of order.
Is acting chair, I'm going to move nine A to fourteen C? And then we'll come out and we'll vote on fourteen C. Nine A is now fourteen C, third reading is now fourteen C under, under executive session.
Thank you, Jim, I appreciate it.
And to be, just to be clear for the record then, you're also adding a fourteen, you're, well, so fourteen C will be the executive session. And then I guess you're adding an item after that where we'll vote on the third reading. So I have two things added, fourteen C, which is the executive session on legal advice for the ordinance.
No, it'll all be done in one executive session, fourteen C is the third reading.
What I'm saying is nine A will happen after an executive session about nine A.
That is, that is, that is correct, we will vote on it after we come out.
Gotcha.
But it will be the third item of discussion in executive session.
Gotcha.
And we will have a vote when we come out of executive session. All right, moving on to nine B. First reading of an ordinance authorizing the amendment and reinstatement of restrictive covenants affecting designated wetlands, tributaries and related buffer areas located upon within the industrial park in Kershaw County formerly known as Governor's Hill West Business Park pursuant to the recommendations of the Department of the Army, Permit Number SAC two thousand six dash zero three eight seven one. Do I have a motion for the first reading of nine B?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So we've got a first from
Schumate.
Councilman Schumate, we've got a second from Thompson, any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Jones?
I really am glad to see this, having sit, sit on this council for the last, uh, 18 years. We, would, this county, not this county council, but county council has certainly not paid attention to wetlands prior to this. And, uh, I haven't appreciated it. I called it out years ago every time it happened. And, uh, I'm, I'm just glad to see this, 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 there shows that we're respecting, we're trying to obey what the rules and regulations are.
Could we have Mr. Templar or Mr. DeBose give kind of an explanation for the public of what this is?
Who wants to do that?
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to the ordinance.
Go ahead, sir.
So Governor's Hill Industrial Park, uh, had existing covenants, uh, put on it by the Army Corps of Engineer, Engineers in 2011. Um, as part of the development of that property, a road was cut in. Um, it caused some minor incursions into wetlands. Uh, the Army Corps asked that, um, other wetlands be delineated within the property, basically, so, uh, the issue would not occur again. Um, the property's been surveyed to, uh, add those additional wetlands identified by the Corps. And this just amends and restrate, restates that previous, uh, restrictive covenant, adds the additional wetlands that the Corps wanted to see protected because of that minor incursion in 2018.
What was the size of the acreage of the minor incursion?
I think it was very de minimis.
Were any bullfrogs hurt?
Yeah, potentially, but, um, I don't think they were endangered, so we probably dodged a bullet on that.
3.18.
Sounds, sounds fair enough. All right, I'd like to call the vote for this first reading. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Councilman Jones, Councilman Tomlinson, Councilman Cato, Councilman Brazel, Councilman Schumate, and Councilman Tucker. First reading passes. New business, item 10, Southern Loop Phase 2A. We had a bid. Uh, it looks like we had a, uh, two, two responses. How many, how many people bid on this project or were asked to bid on this project? Uh, Administrator Templar?
So we set it out, and, um, we were, only two companies were responsive.
So we got two responses. Um, the first one being Conder Construction of Lugolf, The second one, uh, McLam and Associates Incorporated of Little Mountain at almost 2.9 million. Looks like a pretty easy recommendation to award to Conder Construction for 1.641,410. Uh, is that in our budget, sir?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from any council members? Councilman Jones?
We-
Councilman Brazel, can we put it on the floor?
Motion.
No, I'm so sorry.
I, I tell you, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the 1.6 million dollar bid from Conder Construction.
All right, we've got a, a first from Schumate and a second from-
He already got you.
Sorry, Mr. Tucker.
I yell, sir.
No, no, go ahead. Go ahead. I'll let you take it. I didn't hear you. My ears are half stopped up. Duh.
You guys caught me in my first mistake. Good job.
So we, we're ready to move on.
Any discussion?
Yes, uh, Mr. Templar, these two bids are so far apart financially, um, were they apple for apple when it comes to the mechanics?
They were. They, they're both, both, um, entities passed our, our procurement standards for, um, what we normally do in terms of due diligence. What you're gonna see if you were to look at the, the, uh, broke out, uh, bid, you're gonna see, um, biggest disparity came in over a mile of, uh, 12, 12-inch PVC for the force main, and it was, um, the unit prices per linear foot, uh, Conder had it at $76, while McLam and Associates had it at, uh, $165. And then that theme continues through a little bit, so it's more so on the materials, uh, as opposed to any kind of labor or mobilization, so.
It just worries me when I see two bids like this, and one is so high, one is so low, somewhere, you couldn't have got a third bid anywhere.
No, sir. These were the only responsive ones. And, and I've seen this in the past where we have bids that are, um, I've seen the disparity well beyond this, but what bidders do is they stay active in the system. So they'll put something in. Not saying this is what this, uh, group did, but it, that has been something we've seen in the past where you, you, uh, receive bids that are significantly higher than what would be expected in terms of cost opinions for engineering. And it's just to stay active in the systems.
In other words, you don't, you don't want, you don't want the job, but you want to stay active in the bidding process.
And, and, and that's just me assuming that, but I'm, again, um, so it, it doesn't alarm me as much because, uh, you know, Conder is local. Um, and they are committing to unit prices for their materials, so I don't look for, uh, change orders to come from this as it relates to material. So they, they bid, and they're gonna have to live with it.
Mr. Brazel? Yes, so that's what I was gonna say, uh, Councilman Jones, is that, um, I probably would have a little bit more concern at this company. It was vice versa. So they were out of Little Mountain, and they lost to a local bidder like this. Um, are we actually gonna get a sham job and they be long gone? We've had that to happen up here before with companies outside of Kershaw County, but, uh, Conder Construction is a very reputable company here in Kershaw County.
No question about that.
I think they're invested. They do not want bad publicity for, um, not taking care of their hometown.
I don't want to see any change orders.
And, well, you know, sometimes that's not always dictated by, um, the contractor. It's if things have changed where the county needs have, you know, then they'll have to sit down and negotiate that out with the administrator and engineering group, so. But I'm comfortable with it, and, um, I appreciate, Mr. Templar, you, um, uh, getting these bids and saving us a little over a million dollars, 1.3 almost.
Any more discussion? Ready to vote?
Let me ask Mr. Schumate a question. Are you comfortable with this?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not that I always agree with you, I just wonder.
I understand. All those in favor? Councilman Tomlinson, Councilman Cato, Councilman Brazel, Councilman Schumate, Councilman Tucker, opposed? Councilman Jones? Uh, vote passes? Item 10 is complete. Uh, were, were the council member briefings? I would, uh, like to start on my left with Councilman Jones.
Thank you, members of council, and, uh, Mr. Brazel, uh, just a couple of things I want to say. I, uh, really appreciate the folks from the county coming up here from the Pecan Orchard speaking. You know, they have, they, and of course, they're not the only subdivision. We have such a water crisis when it comes to storm water. And I realize a lot of it was done before any of us were ever, even myself, were, were on county council. But nevertheless, we've been elected their, their spokesperson. And nevertheless, we have a responsibility to address it. And, of course, I have asked Administrator, uh, a few weeks ago to do a complete assessment. I, I thought we was gonna have a third party do the assessment. I don't know if it, I don't know if it was a third party or, or the Administrator, but he's gonna give us that when he, he speaks tonight, and I appreciate that. But I want us to, let me tell you what bothers me. What bothers me is when we got money into COG, and we're going to expand Black River Road, and nobody here wants it, and yet we got areas within our own county that where there's water, there's runoff on state, from, from the state's roads onto our roads that's causing problems. What did I say? I said, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean Black River, Highway 521.
I was gonna say, what did Black River do to you?
I know, I know. Anyway, anyway, it, they got caught up in my moment. But, um, it just really bothers me when, when we, we, the state's gonna spend millions of dollars on something like that on 521, and I'm gonna oppose that. We don't want it. And yet we could use that money within our own county with state roads, uh, that, that, um, such as Laskett Road where the Pecan Orchard is, because the water comes from the, from that road and comes down. We've got some other, uh, subdivisions over there that, that there's other properties that, that are contributing to the problem. We got, uh, Red Fox Road. We got some, some issues, same, similar things. But anyway, I just, uh, I hope everybody will pay close attention to Mr. Templar's assessment. And I, and I, I don't know how deep it is or how much he's gotten done or not gotten done on it, but I'm looking forward to it tonight. I know he's been working on it. And I want to say again to the people, and I say this because I truly care about these folks and their, their investment. It's as simple as that. This is not political. I truly care. This is their homes. This is their major investment. This is, this is their, this is the one thing that they have invested the, the most of their life in and their money in. And, uh, so, so what? It was built before we were on county council? I can't give the answer. Well, it's not my problem. No, it is my problem. As long as I'm sitting up here, as long as they sitting out there, when they got water running through their yards, when they got water running through their houses, and they got children, their families, and then you got septic tanks that are floating, stuff is floating to the top. That's a health hazard. No, we, guys, come on, we, we need to take a hard look at these projects when we start planning these projects, whether it's a splash pad, a swimming pool, or whether it's a ball field. By God, the most important thing to Jimmy Jones, as long as I'm here, and nobody's gonna shut me up either, by the way, I'm back. I'm not, I'm not acting as vice chair. I'm not running as chair. I'm run, I'm just running as Jimmy Jones. And by God, I'm gonna hold everybody up here accountable. I'm gonna hold everybody accountable with the decisions we made, and we've got a good next two years together. But I want to, I want to do something for these folks. I want us to stop the, the, investing in other things such as, uh, well, I, I won't repeat myself on that, but I am just really ready to let's make a decision, try to do something to help these folks. They need help. This is, these are, this is their homes. And, uh, you know, I tell you another, we, we got jail falling apart. You know, we gotta look at that as well, too. But anyway, didn't mean to be so calm, but it, but it does upset me when I sit here and think about the fact of what they're going through, and they come up here and they're talking to us, and they're trying to be polite to us, but yet inside, I know that, that, their, their, their inside is just churning because this is, once again, as I said, this is their investment. This is their home. And, uh, I'm, folks, I'm with you. And I don't need your vote. I don't need your vote for nothing, but I'm, I'm with you. I'm your representative, and I'm with you. I'm this whole county's representative. And I look forward to working each and every one in the next two years, two and a half years, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Brazel.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Appreciate your passion. Appreciate, uh, what you do. Your constituent services are top-notch. Um, and as stated, I'd like to have a, a community meeting, uh, with representatives present, that I'll be present as well within the next three weeks, and we can address these things together.
If staff can only do what we direct them to do, I'm not blaming staff. I blame us.
Well, it's a team, team effort for sure. Thank you, sir. Uh, if that's all, we'll move on to, uh, Councilman Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel, and congratulations on your first run meeting. You actually did a really good job. I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
Not too many hiccups.
Not too many hiccups. Sam just caught me on the one.
And you had a lot more hair than the old acting mice, but, uh, but I, that's neither here nor there.
I got more hair than the new one coming.
There you go. You do. You do. Um, and I know nobody wants to sit up here and listen to my hot wind, so thank you to staff, as always. Y'all do a absolutely wonderful job. I know we have an executive session, so I am gonna be short and sweet. I would like to thank, um, Pastor Watson. Thank you. I, I really enjoyed your prayer. Um, it, it touched deep, and it kind of gave a calming sense. Thank you for being here today. Yep, and that's all I have to say.
That's what she does. Thank you, Councilman. Um, Councilman Cato?
Just a few things I wanna follow up on the Pecan Orchard area. You know, I hate the counties failed you in the past. This is where it's all started. This just, this issue didn't just start with the storm. This issue started years ago, and it should have been fixed years ago. Um, I, we can't stop moving forward as a county. We can't stop with other projects and doing other things to forward, push for Kershaw County forward and providing things for our families and our kids. But we also have to look out for our citizens, and I agree with you 100%. If I was living there, I would be highly upset myself. So, um, I really look forward to a solution on your issues in, in the Pecan Orchard. I have family lives in Lugolf, too. I represent all of Kershaw County as well.
Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you.
I, uh, I really look forward to a solution there. I want to thank administration for your work during the storm this week. Um, they kept us updated, and, uh, they provided sand piles around the county with some bags in case people needed, needed anything, needed any sandbags, so I appreciate y'all's work. I'm glad it was no worse than what it was. I think that we didn't quite get as much as what previously forecast, so I appreciate y'all's hard work during the storm this past week. A couple of announcements that, um, was passed on to me. The United Way and Bethune are planning to extend the community garden. Um, and they're asking for any volunteers from schools or churches or any community organizations that'd be willing to help with that, to reach out to Bethune at the town hall. And also Bethune is, um, this is for high school students that's in need of any kind of work hours. They're implementing municipal volunteer program in Bethune for any high school students that, uh, I know a lot of times Beta Club and different things need, need volunteer hours, so if you in search or in need of volunteer hours, you're welcome to go up there, call town hall, and set that up. They'll work with you. Other than that, I hope you all have a blessed evening, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman Cato. Councilman Schumate?
Yeah, n- not much. I guess, again, want to thank the county for their work in this storm. Um, I think, um, you know, we've had about, in the last, what, 45 days, almost six, seven months worth of annual rainfall, so that's a lot. So I appreciate our county and our public works keeping up with all of that. I know we've set up some links and stuff, and I know the county's working diligently through those, so, um, you know, hard times these last couple of weeks, and appreciate the community sticking with us, and that's all that I have.
Thank you. Councilman Tucker?
Thank you, Councilman Brazel. The residents of Pecan Orchard, um, let me share a few thoughts and honest speaking with you. The COG is a different pot of money, um, that runs from a different government. And there is no money sitting there to do anything with 521 at this current time. So for those statements to be made and give you false hopes is not fair, because that's not how it works. There was a magic solution, a wand that I could wave over your residence, over your, um, place of living, I would do it tonight. That's not how it works. We've been in your area before, your subdivision, to fix issues to the tune of about $370,000 for drainage in the past. What I'm asking tonight is can, continue being relevant, raising your issue, but we also have to have a solution that makes sense. Everybody sitting up here can say they want to fix it. Where's the money coming from? How are we gonna do it? I don't believe in parading false hopes. I'm very frank and open and transparent when it comes down to what we can do, what we can't do. And that doesn't mean that I'm not gonna try. I'm a little bit behind the eight ball when it comes down to what all has been done, the communications and all that, because I have not read that stuff here for the weeks that y'all were talking about in the past, but I will come up to speed by the end of the week with the administrator and my colleagues, so I can assure you that. And then anything that I can do to lessen this burden, to correct any problems that you may have, I will fully try, but I will not sit up here and tell you next week I will be able to fix your problems, and it's just gonna take X amount of dollars, because that's just not how it works.
Nobody said that.
Um, that was said, and it's my turn, please, sir.
I'm sorry, nobody said that.
Thank you. So, uh, with that being said, I want to say also, um, to, you wrestle a great job tonight. Thank you. Uh, to Councilman Jones, uh, hard fought race, appreciate it. Um, happy to have you back, as you just said it, as in your district. Um, I see that you're, you're alive and well, because you're over there with venom in your, in your veins, so that, that, that says a lot. It was good to see that. And, um, I want to also thank staff and everybody in the county who's just, um, made the right calls over the storm. It could have been a lot worse, and we could have been less prepared. So with that, Mr. Brazel, that concludes my report, and I thank all of you. Thank you, Councilman Tucker. I'd like to speak to, uh, to a few things. Uh, it, we just had some horrific rain, uh, for the last three weeks, and I, I know the Pecan Orchard's been an issue for years. It was probably developed in a time in which we had no laws as to how we handled, um, the watershed. As a matter of fact, I think when the subdivision was built, DEHAC handled that, and the county did not. That doesn't change the fact that there's a problem and we need a solution. Um, I'd like to see, uh, any, anyone who's, who's interested to be part of the solution, to be present during the, uh, community meeting. Like to, to know when that community-
meeting. Um, like to, to know when that community meeting is gonna be within the next seven to nine days.
It places well, Mr. Brazel.
Yeah, and we, we can hold that community meeting, um, wherever we like. I think we should hold it on-site, and I think we should walk the property. I think we should hold it on-site. I think seeing is believing. Um, yeah, and, and, and there are others, and, and we, we will do that. Um, s- secondly, I, I am a person that solves problems. I'm not a person, I'm not a, a, a political headpiece. I'm, I'm not a talking, talking head. If there's a problem and we can solve it, I'll tell you. We can solve your problem. If there's a problem that we cannot solve, I won't give you false hope. I think there's work that we can do. I don't know that we can rebuild your subdivision. I don't think that's feasible. Um, i- it just wasn't built properly to begin with. But we will work towards a solution that's feasible. Thirdly, I would like to congratulate, um, Councilman Jones on a, a race well-run for the chairman, and, uh, acted as a gentleman, acted as, as a gentleman in defeat. Um, and I wanna thank you for letting me be up here tonight and giving me an opportunity to, to hold the meeting. Um, we'll welcome Ben Connel, and we'll all work together. Some nights we, we might fuss, some nights we might fight, but at the end of the day, we're fighting for the people of Kershaw County, and we're all working together towards common goals. With that being said, I will turn it over to Danny, Temple R., Administrator, for his briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel, members of council. Um, a couple of things. When, you know, I heard East Camden being talked about earlier, but, um, it's, it's not just Valley Park. It's not, um, just those larger subdivisions on the periphery. It's, let's not forget about Deloach Street, White's Garden, Fairfax, Top of Hell Street, Skyview, and Brown Road. All those areas, we don't wanna talk about. They're very depressed, underserved. Um, that whole corridor is just, it's, it's terrible. Um, and the gentleman tonight was absolutely correct. It needs some attention, but also what needs to be done is it has stormwater issues, too. A little bit of rain, it turns into a two-lane road. So, um, I live in East Camden. I grew up out there, so it's very close to my heart. Um, I don't just work out there. I don't just drive through it. I live out there. Um, so, I would be very interested in if anything comes up with East Camden to be a part of that. So... Kershaw Builders, I'd like to thank Robin Blizzard for the sand that he distributed free of charge throughout the county. Um, I, I thought that was great for the, uh, sandbag initiative. Um, like, thank county staff for everything they did, the professional men and women we have on staff, that when these storms come up, they know exactly what to do. They know exactly where to go. They know exactly what to deploy. Um, and they just, everything they do around the clock provides a lot of comfort that, that really never gets talked about. Um, they sit in these, these dark rooms, looking at radar maps and figuring out what the, oh, no, what-if scenarios. So, I don't think they get talked about enough. Um, so, I just wanna let them have a shout-out. Um, Pecan Orchard, this is something I am very aware of. Um, it's not just Pecan Orchard. It's Saddle Brook, it's Canterfield, it's Quail Hollow, it's Regalwood, and all the other three hundred miles of dirt road that county has to maintain. We wanna do something about stormwater. We need to enforce our stormwater rules that we have on our books right now. We don't need to deviate for them, from them, for anybody, any builder, anything, regardless of their size. We have a lot of Qua- we have a lot of Pecan Orchards out there just waiting to surface. Um, and so, store, MS4, stormwater rules, stormwater ordinances are there to protect this very thing. I, I don't disagree with anything that was said about Pecan Orchard tonight. Um, Ms. Burning and I have had conversations, very spirited conversations over the years. Um, I've talked with Walt Breedlove out there. I've talked to Courtney Talbert. Yes, we did put in three hundred thousand dollars' worth of drainage in that area out there. Um, did it solve everything? No. What I have proposed tonight, is it gonna solve everything? Absolutely not. We have a water runoff issue out there from a subdivision that was built pre-county stormwater rules and ordinances out there. And this is what happens when we deviate from our rules and ordinances, or when you don't have any. We get this. And, well, we, the taxpayer, we get this, and we have to eat this. And Pecan Orchard, they have to live this. Um, so, I will pour every ounce of energy and resource that I have into this subdivision and to fix this, just like Saddle Brook, Canterfield, Quail Hollow, Regalwood. We will do that. But it's not gonna solve everything. When we get handed poorly-designed subdivisions, um, we have to fix it. And it's not wet cement anymore. It's dried cement, and we have to figure out how to make something out of something that is already being lived in, they're established yards. So, with my plan, we will go out there. I've talked to DOT as late as today with District One, the local RME. Um, they were pulling out ASBILTS for Guyon Drive, Quail Hollow, um, Latchcot Road, all the drainage, everything they have, the schematics for what flows where. Um, it's my every intention to have from Guyon all the way down to get this water on Latchcot Road to sma- stay within the count, or the, the state ditches and bypass this subdivision. A lot of this water, there's shallow ditching out there. There's shallow ditching within the, or, uh, the subdivision within, on, on Halle Berry, Pecan, or, um, Blackberry Place, Plum Thicket. Uh, we will reestablish the ditches that need to be established. A lot of the water can go down to that project that we have already completed years ago. Um, so, we could take a lot of the burden off of where Ms. Burning lives. The, we have sixty-six feet of right-of-way out there, which is just an incredible amount of right-of-way, but I plan to use it. So, we are gonna go in, and we are gonna reestablish ditches. Grass is gonna get torn up. It's gonna be ugly. It's gonna be muddy. But when it's done, it's gonna work. And so, this water will come from our county roads. They will be crowned. They will go into ditches. They will terminate into the appropriate places. The water that comes into yards after that, I, I, it won't be from our roads, because there will be deeper ditches. Um, they will not have grass in them. They will be maintained. Um, so, we, we can finally move past this. Again, I don't fault Pecan Orchard for coming here. As a matter of fact, I applaud them for allowing me to get up here and speak passionately about what we need to do as leaders for stormwater in this county. It ain't getting no easier. We, we talk about the big box builders, but sometimes they build us the best infrastructure. It's curb, gutter roads with, um, which Pecan Orchard does not have. It's a dirt road. It's a very unique community. Um, they do not have detention or retention ponds, and that is the problem out there. Can we put that in? I doubt it. Could it ever be paved? You're talking about a Herculean effort to pave that place out there. If you pave it, you drain it, and that, we can't even drain it right now with, uh, no, with dirt roads. That acts as a, it's, it's a, a surface that absorbs. If we speed everything up with, with , uh, culverts and pavement, you talk about a problem.
It gets worse.
It, it, it's gonna look like Class Five Rapids next to Ms. Burning's place and going out towards our rest area. So, we have a lot of work to do out there, and I, I just want Pecan Orchard to know that, you know, I have more, um, resources than I did back when Ms. Burning and I were talking years ago. I have two very good engineers that are on staff. I don't have to go out. One of them is a stormwater expert. He, we have been looking. We have been going out unbeknownst to Pecan Orchard during this last water event to identify and understand and look at video and, and, um, just talk to whoever. We'll talk to some of our staff about where this stuff originates from. Um, it, 'cause it's not all coming from Pecan Orchard. It is certainly not the water that falls within the confines of that neighborhood. It's coming from everywhere. And we need to contain it where it can be contained and figure out a solution for where, um, it needs to go outside of these yards. Again, this does not solve every single sheet runoff issue in all these yards. Um, I am not gonna sit here and make that, that promise. So, I have D, uh, DOT. We will work together. We will come up with a plan. We will try to have our work, um, in, in a, um, a manner that is complimentary. So, I, I would really like to have their work done first, but I don't want to sit and wait anymore on what is done in Pecan Orchard. Um, the water that falls in there needs to be, uh, directed and confined into county ditches. I will look to get a third-party contractor to come in and do this work. Kershaw County cannot do this work anymore. We, with Public Works and our road fee, we are, we are funded to maintain what we have in our inventory as of ten years ago. I cannot afford with what our funding mechanism is to, to do these projects. Um, I think that's what's been the problem in the past, is we tried to do it in-house, and we didn't wanna spend money. I'm gonna spend money. And someone's coming in, and they're gonna fix this. And they're gonna reset this neighborhood and these ditches, and, um, we may have to go into our reserves for, because this was a rain event. I will talk to y'all about that going into those reserves for our weather event. This is a weather event, and we have other areas like this. I had a, a, a similar issue, um, that we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money to fix a road, because it was totally creating a very unsafe event, or, or, or situation. Um, so, we, it, it pains me to spend taxpayer dollars on poorly-designed neighborhoods. And so, I, I really wanna get tough about that. Um, I want to use this funding from our emergency reserves. That is set aside specifically for weather events. I think it's not a stretch to, to connect these dots, that this is a weather event. We've had a sustained weather event with our average, uh, rainfall for the year happening in six months. Our, our, our water tables are, are boiling over. Uh, there's nowhere for this water to go. But the water that is going to continue to fall, um, throughout the year has to be addressed. It, it ha- something has to be done. So, I will come to council with a plan for that, um, through procurement, um, and, and my solution as to where this money comes from. Um, I, I, I think it's, it's, it's important, and I think we just gotta step up and do this. Um, but just understand, this will be the first of a series of these subdivisions that we are forced to fix. Um, and, and they're not anything super new. Um, some of them are older. But, again, to the people of Pecan Orchard, thank you for coming in. Thank you, you, thank you for giving me this opportunity. Um, Ms. Burning, I, I can't see you. You're behind me, but thank you for keeping this up. Um, you, you have been a pretty consistent voice out there, so, um, actually, you are significantly helping me help you help the county. So, for that, I thank you. And if anyone has questions, feel free.
Mr. Temple, I want, I want to thank you for those comments. Let me say this, too. I appreciate you talking about our reserves, and I appreciate you talking about getting a, a contract help in here. You need that. And, and, and I just, I, I know this has your attention. I know you're on it. I know you know that, that, that we want it fixed, you want it fixed, they want it fixed, the seriousness of it. I just wanna tell you thank you, and I look forward to seeing your, uh, recommendations and, and the procurement. I'm sure you, when you hire a, a contract with outside contractors, you'll do a procurement on that.
Sure, we, we have to.
You always do, yeah.
Hopefully, they're local, but, you know, um, we'll, we'll see where it goes.
Uh, like I say, I know you're gonna give it your fullest attention, and, and thank you.
Anyone else? Administrator Temple, I appreciate, uh, your gusto.
Thank you.
That's the way I wanna hear you speak at every council meeting.
I don't always have the energy.
I do.
Been a long day, boss.
That, that, that's what, that's what we need.
Yeah.
We, we need the facts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, legal briefing. Mr. DeBoz.
Legal briefing outside of executive session.
All right. Executive session. I'd like, uh, does anybody wanna make a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Brazel.
We have three, uh, we have three topics. Receive, uh, legal advice related to a potential claim by attorney-client privilege, receipt of legal advice pending to a threatening claim covered by attorney-client privilege, and, uh, going back to...
Receive legal advice covered by attorney-client privilege.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Well, that, that'd be the third one. All right.
Yep, that's correct.
General, yeah.
There we go. Um, uh, first, out of Councilman Tucker.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Tomlinson.
All right, Mr. Tomlinson. All those that say yes?
All right.
Let's go.
All right. Nineteen thirty-four.
All right, we have full house. We gotta somebody make a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make a motion to come out of executive.
Second. Need a first and a second. We have it, and we are out of executive session. We received a legal briefing on several matters, and we need to circle back to to 9A. Third reading and ordinance to impose a moratorium to temporarily prohibit the acceptance and processing of applications for zoning map amendments and new development subdivisions within the geographic boundaries of the Airport Overlay District, Section 3-7-1 of the Kershaw County Unified Code of Zoning and Land Use Ordinance Regulations, our ZLDR, to end the application of the moratorium on January 9, 2025, and to provide for matters relating thereto. I would like to make an amendment to this ordinance to allow churches and places of worship to be able to expand.
Do we have to have a motion to put it on the floor?
Get a motion first.
Get a motion second, and then we'll do the amendment, Mr. Brother.
Since we left that topic earlier. I made the motion. First, do we have a second?
Second.
First from Councilman Jones, second from Councilman Tucker.
Your amendment.
Again, I'd like to make an amendment to exempt places of worship churches from the moratorium that are in existing locations, that if they want to expand their congregation, they're free to do so. These, uh, these physical locations already have people there. I don't think they're gonna get in the way of an airplane. Uh, do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Second, Councilman Jones.
Gladly second it.
Like to call, vote for the amendment.
Any questions? Do you get any discussion?
Yeah, I, I would like to.
Talked about it enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, anybody else wanna talk some more?
It was you and then Jones seconded it, right?
I'm good.
I'm ready to, ready for the vote.
All right. I vote yes on the amendment. We have three, three yeses for the church. How many noes? We have three noes for the church. It's a tie.
No, it fails.
Motion fails.
Well, it's still a tie. Three, three's a tie. It always has been. Well, I didn't say it passed or it failed. I said we have a tie.
Ain't no ties in county council.
All right, motion fails. Back to the original.
And.
The original, uh, reading. How many support the reading?
For third reading?
Third reading. All right, we have Councilman Jones, Councilman Tomlinson, Councilman Cato, Councilman Schumate, and Councilman Tucker opposed. I will oppose this. Ordinance passes. All right, that brings us to the end of the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you.